We're opening. Good evening and welcome to the Franklin Township Board of Education meeting. Today is Thursday, September 22, 2022. Can you do the roll call, please, Mr. Toth?
Yes, Mr. Tsai. Mr. Grippo.
Present.
Dr. Hopkins.
Here.
Mr. Jackson.
Here.
Ms. Maris.
Brian.
Mr. Shabon.
Present.
Ms. Singh.
Here.
Dr. Smith.
Here.
President LaCour.
Present.
You have a corner.
Thank you. And for the record, Nishida let me know that tonight is her school's back-to-school night, so she won't be here. Can you read the Open Public Meetings Act, please, without looking at it?
In accordance with the Public -- Open Public Meetings Act, public law, 1975, C-231 Sunshine Law, the schedule and notification of this meeting have been given. They've been given to a variety of places. That's the best I could do. But anyhow, they've been given to the Courier-News, the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, the Franklin Reporter, Tap into Franklin Township, Franklin Township Clerk Manager, District Schools, Offices, and Associations, PTO Presidents, and posted on the district website. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adjourn to confidential?
So moved.
Moved by Artiman, seconded by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourning to confidential session for the purpose of including principal interviews and school business administrator interviews. Minutes of the confidential session will be made public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. And we're adjourned. And we are back. We are coming back from a confidential session for the purpose of discussing confidential matters, including principal interviews and school business administrator interviews. Minutes of the confidential session will be made public when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists. Lori, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please? Thank you. Walter, would you read the mission statement, please?
Sure. Franklin Township Public School embraces its diversity, fosters excellent educational innovation, and empowers all students to achieve their highest potential.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda, adding Personnel Report Number Three and P7? I'm sorry.
Addendum A.
Addendum A?
So moved.
Moved by Artiman, seconded by?
So second.
Dennis, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And we now have a new agenda. Now it's time for the superintendent's report.
Sorry about that. So, and just a little bit, you're going to hear from Ms. Clark about volunteers of Project Graduation. And before their names are announced, I just want to express my appreciation for the wonderful work that Project Graduation does each year. As you'll hear from Ms. Clark, they play a very crucial role in the whole exiting of our Grade 12 students. And this is an attempt, by the way, acknowledging all of our volunteers. This is the first group we're going to work with. But we plan on doing so periodically throughout the year at our board meetings so that we can show our appreciation. The board can show their appreciation for the contributions of our volunteers to our students. You're such an integral part of the system. You're so important to our programs. And we think it's important for us to take the time and acknowledge you all for the wonderful work you do. So Ms. Clark will be working with the schools to identify those groups who have helped us. And periodically, at board meetings, we will be doing this throughout the year. And, you know, certain board meetings are longer than others, so we likely won't do them during those particular months when we have a lot of other business-type presentations. But this is a good month, for example, where we don't have those kinds of presentations, so we're going to be honoring our Project Graduation folks. So stay tuned for more information about more groups coming your way. And thank you to the Project Graduation folks. We really do appreciate your time and effort and all that you do for us. Opening of school 2022. This year's opening went well. Our buildings looked great. Classrooms were ready. Staff were all excited. Our students were excited. And really, things are well underway. Our biggest challenge this year continues to be transportation. Our vendors, like many, are impacted by the national bus driver shortage. We currently have seven buses that are running on four tiers rather than what is typical for us, which is three tiers. So typically, we run a three-tier system, which means a bus will pick up for one school, drop off, pick up a second-tier school, drop off, and then pick up a third-tier school and drop off. That's a pretty standard protocol for a lot of districts, and ours is no different. But because of the shortage, we've had to, what we call, piggyback. Our vendor has had to piggyback. So we have seven runs, or seven buses, that are running four tiers. So you can imagine that wreaks havoc, and those buses are consistently running off schedule. We met with our vendor last week to discuss some of the challenges that he's facing, some of the solutions that we might be able to work together on to address what he's facing. To date, what we have done, we've adjusted our protocols at the high school. A high school has got the largest amount of buses, and it is our biggest Tier One school. It's where the buses start out each afternoon and drop off first thing in the morning. So we've adjusted the times in the afternoon, which seem to be most impacted. We're not letting kids out early, because we just can't do that. We have to give everyone the time and the seat that is necessary, seat time that's necessary. We do it in the beginning of the year, usually the first few days, first three, four, five days. We won't dismiss early at the high school, because the buses take even that much longer at the beginning of a year to get everybody situated and on the bus. They pull off the grounds a similar time as to what they normally would on a regular day. But because it takes so long for kids to find their bus and get used to the routine, usually the first three, four, or five days, we'll let them out early, load the buses, and still pull the buses off campus the same time. But it gives us that additional time to get folks into their routine. What we're going to do with these seven buses is we're going to pull them off to the side. Dr. Solomon has worked with his administrators, has worked with transportation, and the bus drivers. We had a bus meeting at the high school. Those seven buses will stage somewhere else. Kids will exit the building, get on those buses, and those buses will be released from the campus first. If you've ever been at the high school at dismissal, you'll understand why that's so important, because the high school at dismissal is a very crowded place. We've got kids exiting, one exit driving. We've got parents picking up exiting. We've got probably better than 50 buses all trying to get off campus, and they're all really exiting in the same location, because many of them are going in the same direction. So these seven buses will exit first, which will get them off in a more timely fashion. And what we believe is that in days to come, weeks to come, that will certainly help them tighten their schedule. Unfortunately, the school that's most impacted is Sampson G. Smith School, because that has our largest number of middle-school bus riders, and they're also on Tier One. So what happens is you've got these seven buses that are very close to SGS, dropping high school kids off, circling back, and going right to SGS to pick people up. So the long-term solution is more people. And, you know, we can't just keep saying there's a national bus crisis without doing, at least doing our darndest and do something about it. So in working with our vendor, what we've done over the summer is we've made available to him our ability to advertise and reach out to people, which, you know, did prove to be fruitful in some cases. We provided classroom space for him to do his training, and we even provided a very large parking area to do the behind-the-wheel training, because you just don't jump on a bus and drive it, right? So we -- there is a behind-the-wheel piece of it, and so we provided some space for the vendor to be able to do that. The good news is, he currently has five drivers in the pipeline that -- and I don't remember the exact date for testing, but it was either today, maybe, or if not, it's sometime next week, that these five people actually will be tested. So they've -- meaning they've passed their written test and they got their permit. They did all their behind-the-wheel training. And now what remains is to go to motor vehicle, like you did when you were 17, and pass a test there. It just happens to be a very difficult test, a little more difficult than passing your road test for a 17-year-old. But be that as it may, these five people are prepared. So hopefully, those five people will all pass and be able to drive as quickly as the next couple of weeks, which means that will help to offset some of these triple, quadruple-tiered runs. But -- so we're all aware, if one person calls out sick, we're right back where we started again. And that's what happens. You know, years ago, when there was a surplus of drivers, you would put the substitute in. There are no substitutes to be had. So how do you deal with absences? Like we do in the classroom, we do teacher coverage. What they do is they do a fourth tier. So until we get an additional surplus of drivers, we're still going to struggle throughout the year. So we do have another seven drivers in the pipeline that we worked to help them get over the summer and provided the space and the classroom space and whatnot to train. They were later summercomers, so they won't be ready until probably end of October, beginning of November. But if all seven are successful, that would give us 13, seven and five. Did I do my math right, John? Yes, I did it right. That would be helpful. But that's assuming that all 13 pass. And if not, then obviously, there will be some challenges. But again, in our conversations, and I apologize for the long report, but I think this is important, in our conversations with the -- with the -- our biggest vendor, it's Montauk, with our biggest vendor, last week, we also came up with a unique program that we think -- and we just recently discussed with some of our associations, our labor associations, that might provide the opportunity for some of our folks who might be part-time. If you're -- I'll use a custodian, for example. If you're a part-time custodian in Franklin, there may be an opportunity for you. You may be going somewhere else to work. Well, there may be an opportunity right here for you in Franklin. And what our vendor has agreed to do is to work with our folks who are interested, who might be in those situations, to train them, teach them, and then take them for their CDL so that they might then have the opportunity to drive. So I'll go back to the example of a custodian. If you're a part-time, morning-shift custodian who comes in, I'll make it up, at 8:00, and you work until noon, it might give you the opportunity then, instead of going to wherever else you might be going to work, it might give you the opportunity to go right down the street and work in the afternoon as a fill-in driver or pick up a route, an afternoon route, right here for our vendor. So we're working that through with our labor associations, and that's all of them, all of our labor associations, because we do night runs. I mean, there are -- there could be availability for even teachers that might choose to want to drive a night basketball game if they choose to want to do that. You know, again, it's not something we're going to force people to do, but what the heck? If we have an opportunity and we can make it available and we can make it happen, it could help us while helping them and help our vendor. So those are some of the things that we're working through, and hopefully, that will bring us back to a more normal situation at one point during the year with busing. Of course, as always, if there are any questions, or if you've got suggestions or thoughts, you know, something you heard innovative happening in another place that has helped them to offset this challenge. I'm all ears. Let me know. We're not too proud to listen and share some of those thoughts with our vendor, because we're all going through it. There's not a superintendent meeting I go to. There's not a business official meeting that John goes to. There's not a principal meeting that our principals go to, that other principals in Somerset County, other principals in the state, other principals, other business officials, and other superintendents, that is, across the country, that aren't talking about this particular situation. So that's all part of my report. Sorry for the lengthy one, but I will tell you this. Everything else opened like a dream, and I want to thank a lot of people. Thank our staff. Thank our principals, our assistant principals, all our administrators, our supervisors. You know, materials were ready, schedules were good, classrooms looked magnificent are, for the most part. Everything on the outside of the buildings looked to be in good shape. We still have some work to do, things we may couldn't get to in time or got on a schedule for. But overall, we're very pleased with how 2022 started, and our pledge is to continue to work on this transportation thing. And that's it for us.
Thank you, John. Transportation is a huge thing. So to piggyback off that, thank you to all of our staff that worked very, very hard in opening the schools, and here's to a great 2022, '23 school year. So my report is meal applications. Just a reminder that meals will not be free to all students this year, so we can continue to encourage families to visit the Food Services page of our website and fill out an application for free and reduced meals if your family qualifies. And we received a bookbag and school supply donation. Thank you to Assemblyman Danielson, Franklin Township Community Relations, and Franklin Township PBA 154 for their efforts in securing and distributing over 1,200 backpacks to the families of Franklin Township Public Schools earlier this year. The demand was overwhelming, and members of the police department stepped right up, helping Supervisor of Accountability Anna Washington and her staff to stuff extra backpacks as families filed into the room. And thank you to the community members who generously donated to Assemblyman Danielson's drive, and our students really appreciate you. So we're going to start something new during the Board President's Report, because there's a lot of really great things that we're very proud of in Franklin. We never talk about them, or you never hear them. So I'm going to start it off with the great things about Franklin. And before I even knew that this was on the agenda tonight, this is actually kind of what I say at every meeting, is we have amazing volunteers, and we have amazing school-sponsored organizations. It is -- like, I'm looking at the room, right? I've worked with every one of these people, and they're just wonderful people. So, and they work hard and have a good time. So getting involved in the school, joining the PTOs, joining Project Graduation, which is probably like the best all-night party, right, Nick? And any of the -- like, helping the Booster Club, helping the band parents, helping the choir parents, the drama parents, there's something every place for people to help and give back, and volunteers are desperately needed, and especially if they make cupcakes, because they sell really well. So with that, Mike, what's the best thing about Franklin?
Well, best thing? I have a good thing. That, you know, best thing is obviously a superlative. Thinking about this year, I want to say the sports opportunity that my kids have had. My daughter plays field hockey. Field hockey has allowed the women on the team, the young women, to grow, learn how to be leaders, deal with adversity, and, you know, have something fun to do outside of work, and, you know, obviously, come home all sweaty and stinky, so.
Dennis?
One of the things that I have learned that makes Franklin unique is just the abundance within the curriculum that they do offer at the high school. One thing I'm going to target on today is the electives, that with the diverse electives that is being offered, it gives the students the opportunity to see what their likes are or what their dislikes are, in the sense that you may think you may want to venture off into a particular field, and you take a course and be like, eh, this may not be for me. And at least you learn that at an early age versus going into college and trying to figure it out. So that's one of the things I'm going to touch upon tonight.
Thank you. Walter?
Okay, I have a few things. One of the great things about Franklin is that I actually have the ability to support and serve. One of the things I will be doing to support is this coming October 15th, I have a few clothes that I will be donating to Project Graduation. That's always an absolutely amazing event. If you ever had an opportunity to drop off clothes, they actually -- they get a lot of support, and we all have something that we can give away to be a blessing to someone else. So if you guys can go in your closet, I know most of us have been home for the last two years, not really in the office, so there's definitely some clothes in there that unfortunately don't fit us as well as they used to. So if you want to grab those items and make sure you take them to Sampson on the 15th, that'd be great. The camaraderie with supporting sports. Yesterday, I was actually -- had an opportunity to catch the second half of the girls' soccer game, and I believe they won 3, 4 to 0. And this is their second win. I know everyone's been excited about the football team and what they're doing, and if you guys come out and continue to support Blair and the rest of the coaches and the players, they definitely need our support and encouragement. It's been a challenging season for them, but, you know, the best is yet to come. So we want to continue to encourage our student athletes to keep their head up. You know, we can't win every game, but definitely, a loss will continue to make us stronger and fight for some other victories. Make sure you continue to support the New Youth Center. There's different activities from 6th grade to 12th grade, so there's all different kind of activities. Sign up, register. And for the more senior individuals, definitely make sure you go check out the Community Center at Municipal Building Campus. There's definitely a lot of activities for adults. I think they have things like ceramics and tennis and adult pickleball. So there's definitely a lot of things that you can be involved in in Franklin. And for the students and staff, it's -- we have started the race, so continue to keep your head up and press towards the finish line, because we can do so much if we continue to work together. So thank you.
Thank you. Bill?
So we get to speak at the beginning and the end.
You're going -- Bill, we're going to give you two opportunities to speak, and I can cut the mic.
This is a real -- this is a real treat, folks. So, you know, for me, there's -- there are so many gifts that the Franklin schools have given me personally and my family. I don't even know where to start, but one thread that I've noticed through the years is there's a significant amount of parents in every school that I've been in and other schools in the district that follow their kids through that school and then on to the next school. I see many of you here, I'm going to point them out, people like Teresa Farkas and DeMiglio and, you know, many of you, Kim Gordon, every time I turn around, she's in another school. There are key people in our schools that are truly a gift. Can you imagine for one moment, just think for a moment, if there was just administration and teachers over here, students over here, and no parent involvement? There'd be a tremendous void. Because of the parent involvement, PTOs and other activities, we have a very rich school system. So that's what I'm, right now, this month, most grateful about.
Thank you. Sammy?
Thank you. Franklin, to me, has always been a place to treasure because of its diversity. I think we have so many different people from so many different areas that if you can go to any other school and find that, I challenge you, I think we were just ranked top of the state, number two behind Jersey City, was it? For diversity. We have that much diversity in our town, and that is a fantastic thing. And through that, we will grow, and a lot of ideas will sprout on. I love the fact that we have diversity, as Dr. Dennis mentioned, also in our curriculum. The fact that we had a student graduate with a pilot's license, right? I don't know many districts that you can find a pilot's license, or that we're expanding our media program so that the kids that are interested in getting into media or are non-college-bound learners will have avenues that don't -- that haven't historically existed and, I think, are starting to exist in more abundance in Franklin, giving everybody an opportunity to excel. Something that's beautiful for us and something that I treasure within Franklin. Thanks.
Thanks, Sammy. Lori?
Most of my colleagues spoke about our older students. One of the things I'm grateful for is that we start them young in Franklin. We have pre-K 3, we have pre-K 4 programs. That's a huge blessing to our township, because not every township has that. And it allows our students to learn not only the beginnings of their letters and what to do with numbers, but it also teaches them how to coexist with their other -- the other students, how to stand in line and wait your turn and color in the lines, or color out of the lines when that's important to do. And I just treasure that experience for our young ones, because it starts them right. Thanks.
Thank you. Artiman?
I think Lori said it right, and I have a story to share. Last week, I was at Stop &amp; Shop, and I met my son's third-grade teacher. She remembered his name, and she asked me how he was doing, and the connection was there. That's why Franklin is the family. She knew what he is doing. I went back home and I asked him. I said, "Do you remember your third-grade teacher?" And he's like, "Yeah, I know, Ms. Velez. She was my third-grade teacher." And I'm like, "I met her at Stop &amp; Shop, and she asked what you're doing, and she was surprised that you're a junior in college." And that's where, you know, the connection is made. Our teachers are fabulous. They make that connection with the students at the elementary level. They give them the education that the kids take, and they are flourishing. And that's why Franklin is home, and I love it.
Thank you. So we all have a lot of good things to say about Franklin, and we're going to continue this. But what you heard today, take that and share that with 10 other people, so everybody really knows how great Franklin really is. And now, can I get a motion to open public comment on agenda items only?
So moved. Second.
Okay. We could switch it up.
Is our student liaison?
Yeah.
Student liaison's on the phone? Maybe we should let the student liaison?
Okay. So we're going to switch up everything. So our student liaison is on the phone, and her name is Andrea Espinoza. So, welcome. Tell us what's happening at the high school. She's probably doing her homework now. Is she there?
We are having an instant decision on Thursday, December 22nd from 8 through 12:00 p.m. Please go to C306 if you're interested in the Advanced Manufacturing Showtime Program and speak to Mr. Knight. The student member will be holding another cabinet for New Jersey State Office this term. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now go back and do your homework. So again, switching it up, let's go to our Project Grad-- What?
No, no, John.
Oh, let's go to our Project Grad presentation.
Thank you. Thank you all for joining us this evening as we honor some of the past volunteers from Project Graduation. We are fortunate to have members of the founding group of Project Graduation from 1994, as well as some members from the later years. Project Graduation began as a nationwide effort to develop awareness of drug and alcohol use among students. It is a well-established tradition at many high schools and a tradition that began at Franklin High School in 1994. The cumulating event for Project Graduation happens on graduation night, a free, all-night, drug and alcohol-free celebration for graduating seniors. This chaperoned party provides a safe, yet fun environment for our children and shows them that they can have a great time and celebrate their achievements without drugs or alcohol. In the past, Franklin Warriors celebrated their Project Graduation Night on the Rutgers University campus in Piscataway. Students were picked up by bus at the Franklin Municipal Complex the evening of graduation and returned early the next morning for pickup by their families. In 2014, in order to conserve funds and to give our Warriors one last event in their building, Project Graduation was moved to the Franklin High School campus. Most of the events have traditionally taken place indoors, but COVID restrictions brought many activities outside the last few years. These activities have included dancing, mechanical bull riding, caricature art, fortune telling, putting greens, axe-throwings, and games of chance. There were plenty of yummy snacks as well. Project Graduation activities are free and are provided by the fundraising efforts of the Project Graduation organization, which is comprised of parents, relatives, teachers, staff, and community members. Fundraisers have included a twice-a-year clothing drive, which is my personal favorite, graduation congratulation signs, proceeds from the FHS concession stand, contributions from local businesses, plant sales, and graduation merchandise. The members of the Project Graduation, along with FHS staff members, volunteer the night of the event to make sure all of the activities run smoothly and safely and that our Warriors have one final night of fun in their school. One parent volunteer from around 2011 described their group as a family. Another said, we had a team. I have been with these parents since our children were at Pine Grove Manor School. We work as a team and are proud parents of Franklin Township Public School District. The Project Graduation team has grown over the years with an executive committee which numbers 16 this year. But those that came before paved the way, and those are who we salute tonight. There is a quote, "If I have seen further than others, it is by standing on the shoulders of giants." We salute and thanks some past giants tonight from Project Graduation. Martha Camerata, Diane Pagano, Kim Krikorian, Melissa Swain, Teresa Farkas, Lynda Copperwath, Margaret Stansberry-Brown. Your efforts in the past have built a legacy that continues today, and we thank you. I would now like to ask Nick Demeglio, who is on the current Executive Board of Project Graduation, to say a few words and invite our honorees up, where they will receive a certificate, are invited to shake the Board of Education members' hands, and take a photo. Thank you.
Very nice, Mary. Thank you. You took those few notes and made it into this beautiful presentation. Appreciate it. So before I go on, I don't wanna forget, these things don't just happen because I think of them in the middle of the night. They happen because the team brings them to me, and then we push them forward. So in this case, Kaydean Dennison came and wanted to start this honorary for our past founders. And she wanted to make sure that we brought this to the board. So I asked Dr. Ravalli. He went to Mary Clark, and then Mary Clark made magic out of it. Congratulations to all of you. So every year we advertise Project Graduation, but it's still the best-kept secret of Franklin High School. Many people don't even know what Project Graduation is, but we push the advertising every year. We have Nancy Lacourt and Bill Grippo that are always available helping with Project Graduation. I know Nancy spent a couple of years with me watching the sun come up. Great job, and we thank you for that. But picture this. It's June 2013, and I'm sitting in the Board of Education building in the conference room, and I can't remember what I did to get reprimanded that day. But it was my nephew's graduation, and I think it was still down in Trenton. And there's a lot of commotion going on. They're running to get the bus to go down to Trenton. And one of the administrators at the time was talking about Project Graduation. I said, I don't know what Project Graduation is. She said, come tonight, it's down at Rutgers, and you can help out. So I showed up at like 1 o'clock in the morning, and they were having so much fun. The next year, Teresa Farkas comes and asks if I wanna help out with Project Graduation. And I said, well, how hard could this be? It can't be that difficult. So I bring my friend Lonnie Moore with me, and we're volunteering for Project Graduation. The year after, we're meeting, I believe it was at Lydia's house, and we're sitting in her kitchen, and they're doing like a recap of the event. And Teresa says, we're done this year, and we're gonna give it over to you. And she says, you don't really have to worry about anything because I have this notebook with everything detailed, so it's gonna be easy for you to run it. I still haven't seen that notebook, and this is like seven years later. But Lonnie got her book from Lydia, who was the secretary. But anyway, they, they have taught me so much with this. I didn't even know that we did a free breakfast for the seniors the day that they go in for practice. But of course, Lonnie came, recruited my wife. They went shopping and did the whole setup for the breakfast, which continues now for the graduating seniors. So I have been so blessed to learn this Project Graduation business from such great people that founded, and I'm happy to bring it forward. And even though my daughter's graduating this year, if you'll have me, I'll be happy to stay on as Project Graduation and look forward to it again. Thank you very much, everyone.
So honorees, if you'd like to come up and receive your certificate and shake the board's hand. Board members, here. We lost our president.
So we are now going to open it up on, for comments from public on agenda items only. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ardivin, seconded by?
Second.
Who? Lori, all favor?
Aye.
Okay, so public comment on any agenda item is now open.
See a nun. Madam President, I move the public session closed. Did you open it, or?
It was open, but Alfred has to look to see if there are any--
Oh, if there's anybody, okay.
And Committee Member Petasnik, do you have anything as a liaison from council to share? Ed, you've never passed up an opportunity to speak. You're worse than Bill sometimes.
Good evening, Ed Petasnik, to Terhune Court, Ward 1 Council. First, I just, it is an agenda item. To the volunteers for Project Graduation and volunteers across the district that do such a great job, I think, you know, we really are a family in the community, and it's so great to have a chance to recognize those efforts in, you know, the planning, the fact that folks are donating. It's just a monumentous task, and it's an amazing thing that keeps our young people safe in a time when we've lost too many in the past. So it's also for a really great cause and a great celebration. And I was just gonna say a little bit later, but I'll say it now. Congratulations on the opening to school. You know, post-ish pandemic, it's not really over, or it's over, who knows. It's great to see the vibrancy with which the district has come back full swing to provide in-person educational experiences and also maintain safety. And that's really important and very much appreciated. And I've heard from many people about the excitement in the schools and just want to wish you a very happy academic year. That's it.
Thank you. Is there anyone on the line?
No.
No? Can I get a motion to close public comment?
So moved.
Moved by Ardivin, seconded by?
So second.
By Dennis, all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Can I get a motion to, well, actually, we're gonna, we're gonna have our committee reports submitted, so we're just gonna have them read into the record for, for the website. Okay? Good. Okay.
Sure.
And now we're on to new business.
I would like to make a motion to move the following. M1, minutes of board meetings. A1, travel and related expense reimbursement. A2, affirm harassment, intimidation, and bullying decisions. A3, harassment, intimidation, and bullying self-assessment. A4, approve school-connected organizations. A5, fire prevention week, October 9 to 15. A6, school violence awareness week, October 17 to 21. A7, Hispanic Heritage Month, September 15 to October 15. A8, week of respect, October 3 to 7. A9, National Principals Month, October 2022. A10, attorney-client fee contract. A11, new policy second reading. A12, revised policy first reading. A13, new regulation adoption. A14, non-resident student. B1, warrants and payrolls. B2, financial reports. B3, contract approvals, A through M. B4, change orders, none at this time. B5, temporary purchasing agent. B6, pre-K toilet room compliance and waiver application. B7, budget 2023, 2024. B8, non-public school nursing services for school year 2022, 2023. B9, donations, A through D. B10, tuition contract approvals with the Somerset County Vocational and Technical School. C1, out-of-district student school year 2022, 2023. C2, field trip destinations, no destinations to approve at this time. C3, field trip applications, no applications at this time. C4, mentoring programs. C5, course revisions. C6, emergency virtual instruction plan. C7, in-school field trip. P1, revised job description. P2, create positions. P3, new job descriptions. P4, personnel report 3 dated September 22, 2022. P5, employment contracts. P6, abolish positions. And addendum, addendum A, and P7, employment contracts.
So the motion is for M1, A1 through 14, B1 through B10, C1 through C7, P1 through P7, with addendum A to the personnel report. John, can you roll call, please?
Okay, do I have a second?
Sorry.
Seconded.
Thanks, Sammy.
Mr. Shabon.
Yes.
Dr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Barris?
Yes.
Ms. Singh?
Yes.
Dr. Smith?
Yes.
Wait, I didn't even say yes yet.
I thought I heard--
No, I hit the wrong button.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
It would carry without your vote.
Noted, President LaCourteau said yes. Motion still carries.
Okay. So we have a whole bunch. Like, I feel like we need a new org chart. Let's start with congratulating our new principal of Claremont Elementary School, Miguel Rivera. Would you like to come up? at Pine Grove Manor. And at the high school, Anna Washington and Nabeja Allen are going to be the acting vice principals to fill in for Hennessy Miles. Now, moving on the other side. Now, moving on the other side. So I would like to congratulate, what's his name? Oh, Brian Banano. And congratulations to your, to your new position as?
Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Yeah, it's like, so confusing. Assistant Superintendent for Business. And Jackie Schneider as the manager of Human Resources. And Jackie Betchy as the, still the Assistant Superintendent. No, Assistant, Assistant School Business Administrator and Treasurer. Did I get all that?
You got that right.
Okay. And now, I'd like to welcome back Lou Valencia, our new BA.
You didn't mention his position.
Huh?
Lou, I don't know that that's.
Yep.
What did I mention?
Yep. Just wanted to say thank you. Very happy to be coming back to Franklin. I'm a Franklin kid. Worked here for eight years, and I'm glad to be back, back to Frank, being part of the Franklin team. So, thank you.
Yeah, so John, why don't you walk us through, I mean, there are good changes, so walk us through them all.
Yeah, so it is a bit of restructuring on the business side. First off, as you likely know, Mr. Toth is, is moving on. So I'd be remiss in, in not mentioning that, or not on behalf of the board saying thank you. Thank you for your years of service here, John. You did a wonderful job. You were a pleasure to work with, you did a great job, and I wish you well, and I think the board wishes you well in your new role, in your new position in, in a larger school district. So with that said, we took the opportunity to restructure a bit in the business office. What we did was, we have a, a new position, school business, well, it's not really a new position, Assistant Superintendent for Business, that has more of a Human Resources flair to it, and more of a focus on the management of the different departments. Not that the Assistant Superintendent for Business won't have responsibilities to the financial end of things, that person still will, and that person happens to be Mr. Banano, but his daily function will be more working with the Human Resources part of and labor part of the many offices that fall under the business side of things within our org chart. The financial aspects, the building the budget, the managing the budget, the paying people, the payroll, accounts receivable, accounts payable, will fall under the responsibilities of a new position, which is more of a traditional position in a little bit of a smaller size school district, a position called School Business Administrator. So that person will be Mr. Valencia, Lou Valencia. Lou left us after serving as our Assistant School Business Administrator for three years under John's tutelage when John arrived here. Prior to that, Lou worked in our, as our data management specialist, and prior to that, he had a life in the financial world where he worked in banking for some time. He's a Franklin High School graduate, and, and as he said, quote-unquote, "a Franklin kid," so we're happy to welcome him back, and we're, we're happy that he's taking over his new responsibilities. He's had an opportunity to flourish in this role in another district. So when I spoke with his superintendent, who is now angry at me, by the way, forever, she said, letting her know that he was going to be our recommendation tonight, she said it's well-deserved, and he's done a really wonderful job down there in the short time that he's been there. In fact, she said it's become a little Franklin as far as the organization of the business office. So we're really proud of that, and we're really happy that he's gonna come back and share some of those experiences and build on the experiences that he had when he was here. So that's really how we're handling the transition in the business office. That, again, was a challenge, but I think we've found ourselves in a good position. The board has been receptive of the recommendation, and we look forward to moving on, and we wish John the best, and I know he's gonna do a great job, and he's gonna make Franklin proud in his new district and in his new role, and I'm certain that these folks are gonna work together in, in making us proud and keeping us moving on the path that we've been moving the last couple of years. So thank you for the support. Congratulations to Lou, Brian, Jackie, and Jackie, although I don't know how I'm gonna do this Jackie and Jackie thing, but we'll figure that out. Just like you did the Johns, but he spelt his name at least differently, so we're gonna have to work on that, Betchy and Schneider. Maybe we'll just do that, Betchy and Schneider. But welcome aboard, welcome to your new roles, and look forward to keeping this thing going, so, thank you.
Thank you. And we're excited. So now I am going to open it up for comments from the public on any item. So can I get a motion to open up?
So moved.
Moved by Arndman, seconded by?
Second.
Walter, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So public comment on any topic is now open. Wow, you're all so quiet, okay.
Since there's no public, um, peo, um?
Alfred?
Yeah, nobody?
So I make a motion to close, um, um, public comments on any item.
Second.
You seconded it already?
I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public comment on any topic is now closed. Now we're on to board member comments. Lori?
Just thank you so much to all of the Project Graduation volunteers over the years and for laying such a strong pathway that I know that our current parents will follow. Thank you.
Sammy?
Thank you and welcome to Lewis for joining us in our time of need. Mr. Banano, I know you'll do a, a great job, as you've done in the past, and Jackie, the Jackies, I'm sure you guys will kill it, so thank you so much. Thanks to all the Project Graduation folks that, that started something that has a legacy, and I encourage everybody here, and I see a lot of folks that are those types of folks, to keep starting legacies within Franklin that will stand the test of time, because that's, that's how we, we, we grow. Even that, that flight partnership that I discussed earlier was a private partnership, is that right, Dr. Raval? That was a private company that came, the, the flight school. That was a private company that, that came to us.
Correct, it was a medical billing company in town. And the CEO came to us.
They came to us, and they said, "We wanna see the students of Franklin be able to fly in the skies and help to fund that," and that was something I think is a great example of when public and private come together to really see something beautiful. And now we have folks that are literally flying, right? So they, they're helping our students fly both in a, in a philosophical way, but also in a very literal way. So, you know, encourage a lot of that growth as well. And just happy to see the schools back open and really celebrating that fact, and wanna see us continue to, to move down that path. Thanks.
Thank you, Sammy. Bill? This is your second option to speak. Make it fast.
So, my phone's always going off. You know, I always get involved with things, and I try to tell people to lead with the mission. So I'll give you three quick examples. When we did the golf outing this week for the food bank, I told the players at the end, "Yeah, we had a lot of fun, but the mission is to feed those in Franklin who are hungry." When I'm involved with the YMCA's future in Franklin, I give the stump speech that all this stuff in the Y is great, but the mission really in Franklin is to save one life of a kid who's drowning. And the mission of what you guys do with Project Graduation, I've been working with you shoulder to shoulder over the years, and so has Nancy, is to save that one life on graduation night. I mean, we, we can't tell you the horrors over the years of when there's an accident because kids will drink on graduation night, but you have protected those kids for so many years in Franklin. I really wanted to say this before everybody ran out the door, but I should have jumped on the mic earlier. Anyway, just stay focused on the mission because it's very, very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Mike?
Oh, okay. Congratulations, Mr. Rivera, on your new position. Lou, great to see you back. I guess I'm gonna make a couple comments about John Toth. John, it's been a pleasure working with you. I want the public to understand that, you know, this guy has been worth his weight, more, more than worth his weight in gold. There have been several instances and times when contracts would come in and be like, "John, get them to come down, do better," and then the next time we would discuss it, it would be clearly a, and a savings there. So, you know, I'm, I'm sad that we're gonna lose that ability, but I know you'll take that with you wherever you go. I just wanna share, one of my favorite memories is, you know, during the pandemic, John was stuck in his house with his four kids, and we'd always have meetings. John decided that his office would be a very special room in his house, and just every once in a while, he, he'd move over to the side, and you could see the, the thing, the silver handle that would, would fall down. And I just imagine there was a, a TV tray kind of in front of a, a, a white chair that was probably not very comfortable, but, um, but, yeah. And it wa, it was quiet, but it echoed. So thanks, John, good luck. Yeah, it's been great.
Dennis?
Congratulations to all with their new position here in Franklin. And of course, like Mike said, congratulations to John Toth, he's gonna be missed. And like I said, his, um, my introduction, the transition to the board, he was, helped me out tremendously, so I appreciate that. Progress, um, Project Graduation, hey, you, you folks keep doing what you do. And the, the folks here in the township, um, um, truly appreciate it, and, um, uh, I definitely appreciate it. And to the class of 2023, we closed out with 2022 in a good way, and now it's time for 23 to step up. And let's hit the ground running, and let's do great things.
Thanks, Dennis. Walter?
Congratulations, Lou, Miguel, Jackie, Jackie, Brian, and congratulations, John. It's definitely been a pleasure being on the board with you. You're definitely someone who's been, who actually is leaving a great mark here, and I know you're gonna do great things in your next venture, so that, definitely the best of luck for you. Hopefully you'll, you won't forget the little people when you move on and you stay in contact, but we definitely appreciate all the wonderful and amazing work you did here. I wanna leave with this quote. "To make a great dream come true, the first requirement is a, is great, is a great capacity to dream. The second is persistence." Cesar Chavez.
Thank you.
Thank you. Arndman, before I go to you, since we're, since we are saying our goodbyes to Toth, Lori, would, do you have anything you wanna say?
John, I know that you'll do very well in your new position. I thank you for all of your guidance when I was the chairperson of the Finance Committee, getting me through those reports, helping me understand, for all of the wonderful things that you did for this district on a financial level to help us. I mean, when you think back over the years you were with us, we built a high school, we redid the bonds, you did a lot to make sure that the buses kept running even though we didn't have the drivers, and of course, your efforts during the pandemic to make sure that there was protective equipment that was necessary and cleaning equipment. So thank you, thank you, thank you, and we will see you again, I'm certain, at the school board, uh?
Yes.
The school board meeting, so, thank you.
Thank you, Sammy.
Thank you, John, for all your service, although I haven't had quite as much experience as everyone else, I'm sure I made up for it with lots of questions. So I do wish you the best, and I think you should follow Lewis's example and boomerang right back to us. After you do a few years, you know, get that out of your system and come right back, we'll, we'll take you with open arms. Thank you so much for your, for your, for your service.
Guess what, Bill? You're gonna get number three.
Now, what do I talk about this time? This is the third time I got the microphone. But John, you, I, I've been sitting next to him for, since I've been on the board, but I've been involved with him for, for years. He's been my left ear, because when the hearing aid doesn't work, I kick him in the leg. What the heck is Nancy saying now? And, and he's, he's been a great help. But John is, in Yiddish, they, they have a word for a guy like John, it's called a mensch, and that's, that's a person who, who will do for you when you're not asking him to do for you. You know what I'm saying? Somebody who's there that you could really depend on. So it's all loss in a sense, I mean, we've got great people like Banano now, who's gonna do a great job, but John and, and the whole team with Dr. Raval have worked so well. You are a real champion for Franklin, and I'll, I'll be chasing you for donations for our golf outings in the future.
Thank you, Bill, for keeping it under four hours. Arndman?
I just wanna congratulate again, Mr. Rivera, Lou Valencia, both the Jackies, Brian, you know, well deserved, well deserved. And of course, you know, we'll miss John. We've had wonderful times, you know, on the board with his help, answering questions at the school board conferences as well. We've had some fun times together, learned, attended some sessions together, and hashed things out, so we're definitely gonna miss you. There'll be a void, but hopefully with Brian and Lou together, you know, you'll fill the big shoes. And like we said, you know, there's always home in Franklin, you know, like they say, Franklin is the rock, and then we fill it back with the pebbles and the sand and the water, like Stephen Covey says, there's always place for more. So we'll miss you, but, you know, oh, it's always move onwards and upwards. Thank you.
So my closing comments are Nicole Baviera's been wonderful to have had as a principal. Miguel is, is going to do a phenomenal job. The Jackies, like, I like that name, it's so much better than the Johns, are gonna do a great job. Having Lou back is really good. Brian, yeah. But we've built a team, we've built a very close team, and we're building capacity, and I think that's something that we didn't really do a long time ago on the board, so we are building that capacity now, and, and it's always great to just hire from within and promote from within and develop Franklin people to be their best, because that's what we're doing with kids. Apparently, we have overdeveloped you. So I hired you. And I liked you from the interview because you were just, it's your candor, it's your sense of humor, it's kind of, it's very snarky, fits in with me. But you don't take any nonsense, you hold people's feet to the fire. You've been very supportive of the board, you've been a wonderful asset to John, and we are definitely going to be missed. So, but you know what? Why don't you close out the meeting, and why don't you, this is your last meeting.
Oh, wow. Thank you. Oh my God, I only, I think I've only was able to use this like five times in the six years I've been here, once a year in Jan, in January, yeah. Real quick, I wanna thank, or congratulate, I should say, Brian Banano, Jackie Schneider, Jackie Bed, Betchy, and?
Jackie Betchy, and, and Louis Valencia on their new roles and positions here at Franklin Township Board of Ed. I, I know you guys are gonna be super successful in the years to come, so congratulations. I want to thank the board and Dr. Raval for the opportunity to work and serve you. It was truly an honor. And I would like to thank the students, because it was a privilege to serve them, and for, without them, none of us would be here. I truly enjoyed my time and the things we did together and accomplished, building schools and additions and whatnot and everything else, we'll be here 100 years after, we're all gone, still serving the kids. So that being said, it's a wrap. Meeting over.